So there are a couple of them. Share this. So on the Bonner County Planning Department webpage, under Comprehensive Plan Map. So on the Comprehensive Plan Update, it gets you to this landing page. And there are three different maps here, or two different maps here where they look at. You have the Recommended Comprehensive Plan Update. One is just a PDF, kind of a stagnant. One's a digital map, which looks like this. And then down further on that page, you have the Public Viewer, which gives you the side-by-side comparisons. This is what we used to gather public comment of various workshops we did. Which one would you like me to present? One gives you just a bigger look at the current... Or if one gives you a side-by-side, the other one kind of gives you the Recommended Comprehensive Plan Updates.
I think the side-by-side is really helpful.
Oh, very.
I agree.
Larry?
Let's pause a second so people can get seated. Are we good? Sandy? Good? All right. There we go. Thank you.
So a couple of major changes. You'll see there's colors throughout the entire map, right? On the left, under the current land use designation, and we went through this last time, there's a number of these designations that have been combined. The clearer color, which was Remote Ag Forest, is now this dark green color, which is Remote Forest Land. And that's also used for public land. So if you see some of it that looks like it's, like, "How is that remote?", because it's owned by a public entity. So there's a number of those, like, around the Packer Rocks. Anything that was zoned R-10 has been designated as ag forest. And the proposal here eventually is to give, well, not eventually. The proposal through this is to get rid of the R-10 designation, or zoning designation, or zoning district, and leave only the ag forest. With that, the other change you'll see, I think we discussed this last time, is getting rid of the urban, which was the red color on the left, and combining it with suburban, which is the yellow color. And then Alpine and the Alpine Village, I believe. Alpine Community and Resort Community is being combined into this recreational community. So I think that's the major. If you want to, I could zoom in to different areas, or how would you like me to proceed from here?
Remember when we were looking at the map? It's around that dark blue... Somewhere in here was odd when we were in Blanchard, and we were talking about the designations along this side, and I think that side.
You want to look down at Blanchard?
I don't think it was Blanchard. I'm saying when you did the workshop in Blanchard, there was a part of the map where, I want to say, we were talking about what the designations were, and that they weren't grouped together just yet, and you guys were going to still work on that. Was there a change that occurred in those two areas? When you looked at the bigger map?
There was along the pondered river, right? Is that still at the time when we were going back and forth on that?
Yeah. You guys were going back and forth on it, and so it wasn't quite there, but you guys had identified that it was something that needed to be worked on.
Well, one of the areas that you might be referring to is that we had designated a bunch of, a number of areas on the lakefront, both in the case of Priest River, pondered area, as recreation, and we didn't push those. So this map shows a reversal.
Okay.
It goes back to whatever it was, whether it was rural five or something else.
Okay.
The original designation.
For all the workshops, that was being shown as recreation. It was after the workshops that we reversed that. As long as it based on what we were.
That was more of the significant changes that we did after the workshops.
Yeah, okay.
Would that include the area along lakeshore, a few miles west of 95?
Yes. Well, if it was recreation under the old map, we left it recreation. We didn't change the designation.
Because I was curious about the suburban zone for that area that's proposed now as compared to recreation. I was curious what drove that decision-making.
I think the reason we did that was because it was suburban. And we just changed it back.
So this area fell within the sewer district or the sewer water district, right? So that was expanded to incorporate the, for the district boundary.
Gotcha. Okay. So urban services are what drove that designation decision?
We extended that water line to the west, so.
Okay.
I think we had some comments, too, that they thought it could be suburban.
And is that similar, or was there a different rationale for Kukalala Loop area?
I think Kukalala pretty much stayed the same. Yeah, if you look at those two maps there, not much difference. Because we were discussing originally, you know, making that rec as well to match all the other work fronts. But we decided just go ahead and leave that as suburban.
One little change there on the east side, just a little triangle there.
This was a split designated.
Don, you talk so low. Can we use the microphone? He's a quiet talker.
So like we just said, to the east side there, that was a split zone and split designated parcel to the east to where the symbol 95 is. You can see the difference between the two maps. I think that was the only change after everything was said and done, leaving it the way it was around the lake and making that change on the east side. I don't think, there might be one on the north, that one.
Grab some of these and put them into suburban.
Yeah. They already developed small, there you go, next to the fishing game site.
So is that primarily based on community feedback? Is that what you're saying?
And what's there?
I was just trying to differentiate between the two designations as far as what seemed like the better fit and why. That's all. Just trying to comprehend the rationale between the two designations, recreational community and suburban residential.
I think the concern with recreation is that there's a reference to recreation to commercial.
Okay.
And I think people were concerned that that might open the door for more commercial development.
Sort of the...
It's not quite the same.
Sorry. Yeah, so the rural service center aspect of recreation? Is that... Okay.
If you look at the use tables, I think you can see the difference.
Yeah, again, I'm just, I'm trying to just track the rationale for some of the areas that, on first glance, I can see and understand, possibility of two different designations that those descriptions would fit, trying to better understand how you guys reached those conclusions.
So I think we identified something like 80 or 70 split designated areas that they tried to align with one designation or another. There's a few that they left split due to the size of the property, if I remember right. But all the rest of these, they tried to follow by the majority of the property, not necessarily the size or whatnot, but by the majority of the property, what designation should fall. So, or what designation it should fall in. A good example is near the top of Remco, where you kind of have this mishmash of designations, where they followed by majority versus by the split. Or was it split zoned?
Please. I don't recall.
So it looks like the designation follows here, but this was split zone R-10 and R-5. So I think by zoning is what we used to define.
This is a good example of a question I have kind of throughout the county is, this one's not quite as isolated, but at times there are isolated parcels that have a different designation than the adjacent parcels. And I'm just trying to understand.
Oh, you said it has a parcel, but like, for instance, the ones that, it looks like an island. That's because there had been a fairly recent zone change. So I think that we should make the comp plan designation different to the zone that had already been approved. So some instances like that, we left it consistent with the zone, rather than change the designation.
So did you guys talk through the implication of an existing non-conformance versus having these isolated pockets, and how these isolated pockets will likely become an argument in the future for making zone changes to the adjacent parcels?
Yeah, we talked about that a lot. But these instances here, the zone had already been changed. So the comp plan, it didn't really matter what the comp plan had been, versus that if we'd had ag forest, the zone change, you wouldn't, the zone's not going to be changed.
Understood, yeah. Just trying to maintain, I guess, in my head, a more consistent with...
But, you know, we, for instance, we had, at one time, we had looked at some commercial development and maybe even industrial, and we thought about changing that. And then we went back, because we would have created an island in the middle of, say, ag forest. And we decided that was not a good idea. So we'd have to change it back to what the predominant current plan designation was. So we eliminated, to the extent we could, consistent with the zoning, tried to keep it consistent.
And that, I mean, what you were just saying, Chairman, is, I guess in my head, where I tend to lean is trying to maintain the predominant. Because I anticipate what will happen is, we'll get a lot of requests in the future for the adjacent parcels around these isolated pieces. And the rationale for the argument then will become, if this one meets the criteria, why wouldn't the adjacent parcels, right? Because the primary characteristic at this point is going to become access, and whether or not the involved agencies say it's acceptable. So if my access to that parcel is the same as the five adjacent parcels, then all the five adjacent parcels probably should be able to win the same logic argument as to which type of a designation they should have, and then therefore which zoning should follow. So that's the piece. I just, I appreciate how much the Commission has created these large swaths of consistency. But then when we have, and it's mostly the rural residential that I've noticed, when we have these sort of dotting the landscape in these areas of ag forest, I'm anticipating what's going to happen in the future and the very difficult decisions the board's going to be faced with to figure out whether or not to agree to those map amendment requests. And that's what I think is going to be the result if we, if we keep these islands. I know Sully Valley has a number up, between Priest River and Priest Lake has a number. And sometimes there are three or four to maybe eight or 10 parcels. It just, that's the one thing I'm struggling with.
Well, I'll tell you what I thought was. My thought was that we would try, if all of the subarea plans were very consistent on the rural character of the county. So to the extent possible, we kept these designations like ag forest, so as consistent as we could. Obviously, there's going to be individual reviews of individual parcels based on what they, people want. But we didn't, we didn't really, that wasn't the, the route we took. I mean, we decided that, look, for instance, a parcel between, that one little red, little blue mark and another blue, they came in and said they wanted to have that rural five. Well, you'd have to look at it, but they would have justifications for it. So rather than, rather than go parcel by parcel, we tried to look at it more broadly in scale.
And I agree with that approach, that it should be broad. And I guess that's just where it's a little more challenging for me to have these little islands when we're looking at it from a broad perspective.
Well, unfortunately, we couldn't change the zoning, so.
Well, I understand.
The designation doesn't change.
Yeah, I guess in my mind, it comes down to the rationale of, are we better having an existing non-conformance with a land use designation to try to maintain the overall character better? Or are we better off having these islands that build an argument to create more of this patchwork in the future, which is the thing I'm hoping we can avoid? So it's just, it's, on the one hand, we've gone away from the problem, say, with like the, we're looking at soils, right? So we've gone away from that, which I think is really beneficial. But now I think we're going to run into a similar scenario where we're saying, we've got a rural residential designation in the middle of ag forest land, and then how much of the adjacent parcels that are fed by the same transportation system, roadway systems, since that's a primary factor now in the designation descriptions? How much of that do we allow those arguments to win the day on changing the designation and then ultimately the zone for all the adjacent parcels?
You know, at least in these examples, and I think in many examples, what you would find is, they have that argument based on the fact that they're zoned R-5. So even if you took that blue island, either one of those that are on this picture, and made the land use designation ag forest, I assume it would be 10 in this area, I'm not They still would have the argument, well, I have this R-5 zoned parcel next to me. And that's really kind of where the rubber meets the road, is in the zoning. That's where the really hard criteria are that have to be met, the detailed criteria. So I'm not sure it solves a problem to change the land use designation.
I see that. I see what you're saying. From my perspective, though, the comp plan is to say, what's our big vision? And then everything else, right? The higher level of granularity of detail is supposed to be fed out of that. And so if we start by saying, the big picture vision is that we are going to promote more inconsistency, then that's the direction we'll continue to go. If we say we're going to promote more consistency, then that may lead to something that will actually be more consistent. To me, it's just, it's two paths. You know, it's a lie in the road, and which side do we want to go down? I want to advocate for more consistency and create less of the patchwork. And so that's, that's the reason why I'm, I'd like to see us not have these little islands ultimately.
I'm kind of curious, instead of having an island...
Pleasure.
What would be the negative side effects about just incorporating the area around that island so that it's not an island, so that blue just moves over a little bit and incorporates another 10 parcels or something?
Mr. Bowman?
So I'm complete, in complete agreement with having consistency and less patchwork as little as possible. But bear in mind that, once it becomes non-conforming, then the parcels around it don't have that argument. And that argument never should be an argument anyway, because this other lot did it, therefore I want to do it. But if the other lot shouldn't, you know, if, if the, if the law has been twisted around a little bit here and there to benefit individual property owners, it doesn't mean by a prior board, doesn't mean this one has to do it. But once it's non-conforming, I live in a AF-10 zone, and I've got lots near me that are three-quarter acre. That doesn't mean that someone next to them can make a three-quarter acre, because they're non-conforming. So just, as long as the code continues to advance and doesn't wait another six years to get updated, I think that's part of the issue.
I think the odd lot aspect, when I hear the chairman talk, the map is the bigger picture, and I think that the non-conforming lots that are sprinkled in there, I think there's a recognition that it doesn't conform, but that the bigger picture was conforming to make it, and I, I think that in part, and Mr. Song said correctly, it's if the blue person had an issue, then they could address it, but that the map itself is what the vision of the area is. And that, that one blue person is just deemed a non-conforming to what the vision of the map is. And so if they were, they could, it doesn't impact in the same, you know, the full map just because there, and odd lot out, there's a lot of, there's a lot of property that don't match where they are, and they're just deemed a non-conforming map. I think I'd be more concerned if I saw a lot of blue, but it looks like it's mostly conforming with that one. Sir? I don't...
Oh, I was just, I was just going to say, you know, we're guided by Lupa. Of course, I think everybody here knows that. But it says, we have to do a comprehensive planning process. That means, you know, in-depth, all-inclusive. So we need, we do need to look at all the land, and we do need to go ahead and, in my opinion, look at those primarily. I understand comprehensive plan is kind of a 30,000-foot view. But we need to go ahead and take a closer look, in my opinion, on where those designations end and where they begin, to see if, if we missed something. Because even, you know, we've had different versions of our old land use map, and we, you know, we found here a couple, just two or three weeks ago, and said, oh, shoot, we missed that one. And so we've gone ahead and changed it. But I think we're, we are guided to, to look at all the land in the jurisdiction. We don't have to go individual parcels, but in my opinion, whenever we come to an area where one designation ends and another begins, that's what, that's what requires a hard look, in my opinion.
Can you pass it to the gentleman behind you?
How's it going? My name's Jeremy. I'm actually in the parcel between that blue spec and the five there, and in process of rezoning. As new to all this and, and learning a lot, kind of by a tidal wave in itself, as I'm trying to look at, you know, what you guys ultimately are trying to do with the big vision and all that kind of stuff, and then looking at different things, obviously, I'm a little more focused in my parcel here. But when I look at what we're defining as what ag forest is in definition and what R-5 is in definition, and being that I live in that community there, Eagleview and the crossroads that I'm off of, within there, you literally have, I want to say it's like 29, and once that, if that five ends up being approved and split, as it's in process, you're going to have 32 eight acres or less lots, just in that segment there, and only like eight lots that are 10-plus acres at all. And then when you look at the stuff that's R-5, right, adjacent to it, those go clear up into 10-plus acre lots, but it's an R-5 as well. And so I understand where you're coming from, and this is kind of one of the things I rack my head on a little bit, because I'm a very analytical-type person. And so when I'm looking at stuff like this, the question does also stir up, like, how many other places are like this, if you're playing that, you know, that variance between things, and what's really fair? And again, I come back more to, what's the definition of ag forest versus the carte blanche-ness aspect? Like you said, there's two lines, right? Which direction are you going? To some sense, it makes, to me, it makes more sense that you do what fits the definition as the majority versus that, that cuts down a lot of the future argument, arguments, because you have a clear definition of what the land is, what it does, what it supplies, and that kind of thing. To some extent, of course, I'm always trying to problem-solve things. My brain goes, and I don't even know if this is an idea, but like, to identify properties that fit that dynamic within that and give the people an opportunity to say, hey, if you want to pay the fee, you can lock in that zone. It brings in a financial income into the county. But then people have that ability to lock in that, that variance area for a period of time. And then whether they use it or do anything with it, but they have a chance to be able to do that, and it just opens up to the public to be able to have that's in this in-between. Since the R-10s being, pretty much just got totally taken away, giving that ability, so that, I think that's the hard part, is you're kind of almost, like, I bought my property as a R-10, knowing there's certain things that I can at least address or pursue and that kind of thing. Where it goes to ag forest, everywhere I'm asking and things I'm looking into, it just sounds like I'm pretty much getting handcuffed, and I don't, I'm not able to do anything more, and I have no say in it, to some extent. And so it, the weird part is, I'm wearing two pairs of shoes sitting here talking right now, because I'm doing one thing that really has nothing to do with what this conversation is, so I want to make that really clear. Like, it is, I get my properties there, but it is two totally different things, because whatever gets chosen there doesn't make a difference to what I'm doing over here. Okay? Does that make sense, or am I rambling too much?
I think we dissected it.
Appreciate it.
If I may add one more comment. I know this area, at our hearing, we heard from three or four different folks, I think it's four or five, actually. And they all made suggestions at that final hearing. None of those folks that written, that made those comments included this one. Not in a subarea. They were not included.
Right.
Sure. Yeah, that's a lot of the county.
I guess when you now actually ask Commissioner Doc these, and when you look at the map and you see the blue, and you have that concern, question about conformity, what, do you have a recommendation of what you'd like to see? Or is it kind of just a conversation?
Well, yeah, right. I mean, at the moment, I'm, it's a, I'm asking the questions and offering some opinions, but I'm better, I'm trying to better understand the planning commission's thought process to achieve what they did. And then, ultimately, I personally would like to see more uniformity. I think it does come down to, as was being stated, case by case, to look at each area to say, does it make sense? You know, the one, the one parcel that's more vertical, close to Highway 2, you know, there were another four or five parcels, I think, between that one and the highway that have probably the same transportation system serving it. So should those parcels all be the same rural residential zone? It's close to the highway, it's easily accessible, you know? We are trying to plan for having future capacity. What's the right place to do it? That might make sense to do it there. Whereas, when we have other areas, like if we look at the Sully Valley, or we look, you know, partway between Priest Lake and Priest River, where we have a really large area of ag forest, and then we have a few blue patches dotted in there, to me, I'd rather have that be a non-conformant and make it all green. So that's, that's where I, because I think what we're going to do is, when we have isolated pieces that are surrounded by a different designation, I think the future boards are going to be stuck with these challenging decisions about, does that dot continue to grow, and does it create essentially sprawl of a designation? I don't like the idea of being, you know, creating that condition. I would rather create those clean lines and have delineation between the two wherever we can. And so, again, when, you know, I'm not trying, I'm not saying we shouldn't have more rural five, I'm saying we should have it in the right locations, and that might be a place where it makes sense to connect the blue and expand the blue. And then there's other areas where I think the blue should be replaced by green, and go to ag forest for consistency. So...
You know, to a large extent, what we did was we tried not to go on a case-by-case basis, tried to look at the broader picture, which I think is what the comprehensive plan is supposed to do. So anything that's in green there was in a, was in a, was likely, probably in an R-10 zone, so it was a 10-acre minimum. You know, when we looked at it, we said, really, there is not much difference between an R-10 and an ag 10. We didn't see any reason to keep the R-10, we could make it all within the ag forest comprehensive plan designation. So you have to understand that all those areas in green now are 10-acre minimums. So whether you, whether you make it blue, or you make it, if you make it blue, well, then, you know, then obviously they could go to an R-5 real quick.
Right.
That's an automatic. We didn't think that was appropriate for us to do. Tried to follow the zoning as much as we could. Created some issues, like those two little parcels you see there. But, you know, we tried, we tried to maintain some perspective when we started that.
And I appreciate that, Ted.
The other thing that we did is, you know, you can look at some of those, and you can say, well, there's a lot of small lots in there, maybe we should just make those, you know, conform to what they actually are. Well, we actually did that when we did the recreation areas. We, you know, we said, look, these are half-acre or less lots, but why are they R-5? So we said, well, maybe we should make them recreation, because that's what they are. And we got, as you probably know, we got a huge, huge amount of pushback.
Right.
So we changed it all back. So now we have a lot of non-conforming lots, a lot on the picture. So, you know, trying to move forward with that philosophy, we didn't try to go around the county and say, well, you know, these are, there's a five-acre lot, so we should make it R-5. They were designated as an R-10, they stayed at 10-acre minimum to the ag forest comprehensive designation.
Yeah, that, I guess I, I do appreciate the big-picture thinking. I'm just struggling with applying that same filter in some of the areas where the R-5 zoning became the predominant decision-maker, it looks like, to create the blue dots in the, in the ag forest areas. So that's the piece I'm, I'm struggling with. But I think, you know, the board can revisit that. If, we understand the rationale, that's the recommendation, we can revisit that as a part of our process, if that's...
And you're looking for consistency and application?
Correct.
And the, the problem, I think, that the chairman is saying, in that, sometimes that created a problem on some of the parcels. And so you went with what the majority of consistency that you could find, and are accepting that some of those lots are not agreeable to that kind of change. And the impact will be, there's, it's an odd lot, is kind of deal. So.
Yeah, kind of our, our philosophy was really that you deal with these things on a parcel by parcel basis in the normal process, not in the comprehensive plan process. That's, that was kind of what we, we actually did.
So let's go Matt and then Doc.
What I was going to say, I, very few R current, R10 zones became R5 zones. There might have been a few, but there's not very many at all. So, you know, it, it kind of went also on existing zoning there as well. I, I do think that we have to, that's where I might disagree, just with the chairman, that I think we do have to take a look at, I think it's our duty to take a look at that. 6508, you know, it says it shall be the duty to go ahead and do a comprehensive planning process, implement, review, and update it. The plan shall include all lands in the jurisdiction. And so we do need to have a consistency on how we're applying this, these descriptors, this criteria that we came up with for the land use component. And, you know, we, like Alan says, we did look at every single individual parcel, but again, I believe we need, and I think we did for the most part, look at those where, find out where one designation ends and those descriptors end and where they begin. I think that's what's important here as well.
Did you give a recommendation for those, like for the example of these blue spots of what you would see when you guys were looking at this map?
Well, like the, the one example we just had up there, I thought it was totally appropriate for that, that parcel in between.
The blue one.
And that one was approved, I know the owner on that, he, he got approved, I think two thirds of you guys were on that, on the board when that got approved last fall. At that parcel to the east and those parcels to the south, including that on the highway, I thought they should have been all zoned R5 myself. But that, that was just one, one opinion.
That was the, that was the minority opinion?
Yeah.
Did you hear he voted otherwise?
Go to the back here.
I, I guess I, I also come back again to the definitions of things. I get what he's saying is they're doing, cutting straight lines and just looking things from one thing to another, in short. But being like on this area here, that, that whole area, more than even just the couple, it meets the R5 definition way more so than it's ever going to meet the Ag Forest by definition. And so that, that's the part that I don't understand, like I get having a solid system place, but when you just carte blanche, do certain things, but then put criteria, that's where you end up with the backlash down the line, is like, how do you have this definition yet you're saying I'm this? And I guess it would almost make a difference if you're able to sit there and say, well, it's just going to Ag 10, you were Ag, I mean, R5, now it's going to Ag 10, but you still have the same ability to come before and present and, you know, request a change or whatever else. But what I'm hearing is, now if it just goes carte blanche for everybody into the Ag Forest, all of a sudden, you, you no longer have what you purchased, to some extent, into your property as well, with that ability to at least plead your case. Am I incorrect in what I'm saying?
Yes.
Oh, that's fine, I'm, I'm, I'm asking the question.
Your question makes sense.
Thank you.
To me, anyways, you know, when you purchase something with one designator and then the county changes it.
Right.
It is a valid question, I believe.
But you do, but you do have the ability to come and request a change to both the comprehensive plan map and the zoning amendment. In fact, from my time on planning and zoning, when we saw those, I would, I would guess, seat of my pants, most of those requests involved both a comp plan map change and a zone change, because most were coming from some Ag Forest land use designation to a rural five. So you can request both. You may, you may, you may take more of an argument now, because we've split the R5 into a different land use designation, but, but you can't request both. So you understand.
And we didn't, we did not, if the gentleman said, uh, we could print our files to Ag Forest, we didn't.
No, no, I meant the 10 to 5.
We didn't do that.
And Ag.
It was only the 10 acre.
These are R10.
Now it's Ag Forest.
Yeah, that's what I meant to say, if I misspoke there.
No worries. So, but to be clear, whatever, you always have the option to come before the board to present your map change or your zone change.
Well, with, with that being the change, does it become more difficult and less applicable moving forward? And I guess I'd ask Jake, you deal with this quite often too, right? Like where would, how do, what do you see from the technical side of it?
Well, absolutely. So if you, if this wanted to go to, if your property, for example, wanted to go to an R5, and you had a, a land use designation of Ag Forest, then it's a two step process versus a one step, right? It's a comp plan map change and a zone change. I think we all understand that.
I'm there. But, you know, kind of going back.
Sorry, we'll be next.
Sure.
Oh, no, you're good.
So what we were faced with, everybody wanted this with the sub area plans, and we did. And we also got, we had nine workshops. So we got a lot of input. And really, the emphasis was on, you know, the rural nature, rural character of the county. So when we were looking at this, we, we had that in mind, and I think we tried to implement that in the way, in a way that made sense. And that was kind of our overarching. So, you know, bringing it down to this, if someone wants to get out of the Ag Forest and that requires a comp plan amendment, we thought that was a kind of the appropriate thing to do. That it needs to have a review at that level and at the zoning level. Doesn't mean it can't happen, as we've seen around the county, I mean, there's all kinds of, look at these parcels. Those, those zone changes were made, you know, when there was a different comp plan designation. So it's not that it doesn't happen, it does happen. Our job, I guess, is to plan in a way that the community was going.
Can I ask you, before we go to her, what was the feedback that, if you got any, from that particular area when you were doing the workshops with the, this little spot center blue in the green? Did they give comments on it? Because I'm hearing part of what some of the concern is, the process for the blue is now a two step process to get a change because the map changed. And so did, was there community feedback and involvement on that? Because in part, what you're saying is, request the change, which is the typical, if you wanted different, to do something different. Did you get feedback on whether or not that this map was an issue in that area for that section?
We got to get back both ways.
Both ways?
I don't think my area, that particular area was ever involved in any previous things, other than that last meeting that I showed up and tried to present, first, like second time in my life, I'm talking to people. But basically, the feedback that was stated was, this is the 11th hour, this is the very end, and we've been doing this for six plus years, and we're not doing anything more with anything small, we've done the bigger pictures, is what I believe was pretty much said. And so it's kind of just a shutdown, whereas I thought that's what that meeting was for. And so.
So was your takeaway that the people in the blue wanted a different designation? In terms of the, because you, your comment is about the commissioner's presentation, but what was your feedback that you feel the community had on that section?
I, I've talked to at least two of my neighbors that are adjacent to me, and both of them seemed to be in favor, they wanted to know more information and whatnot.
In favor of the proposed?
Of R5.
Of R5?
Mm-hmm.
So the, the area that I have concern with is in a different section of the county, but on a professional level, because I am a professional land use planner who has gone through quite a few comprehensive plan map amendments and comp plan amendments with our cities and our counties that we've worked with, and essentially what went on at the planning commission stage with not hearing individual concerns is the exact opposite of what you usually find. That is the time for people to come in, yes, you should be making your written comments and all of that, but at the hearing itself, that is where you address it. This workshop is kind of, it's really good, but it's also something you don't usually see, so it's also a good place for individuals to come and voice their concerns that weren't heard at the planning commission stage, essentially at that. You'll hear it at your hearing as well. But at a comp plan map amendment, you do need to look at the individual concerns that come before you, because essentially what you're saying is, no, it's not important enough to look at at this point, but then if these people come and they do a comp plan map amendment, that just means that, and you approve it, that means that there was something wrong with your map when you adopted it at the update. So why not fix it when you're already fixing the county? And so that's normally, I'd say 99% of the time, what you're going to find with that is that you do listen to the individual concerns on it. People make their cases on it, whether you take those into consideration or not, it's obviously up to the boards. But you do almost always, actually, this is the first time I haven't seen that happen, is that it's not taken into consideration to be looked at, to, did we make the right designation change to those properties?
So I thought we did workshops, I want to clarify, you're saying the first time that it didn't happen where the public got?
The hearing. So at the hearings, you're still supposed to be able to listen to those. I know individuals went to workshops, I myself did, about the properties that I'll speak to, to voice my concerns, and they were not included, they're for our family properties, and they are not consistent with the other ones that were changed, and ours were changed and others were not in the area. There was no ability for anybody to explain to us why they were changed. They just said it seemed to fit, but they're, when we, when we go to it, I'll show you what I mean, but the, the concerns just aren't being addressed, but they are in this process. That's a normal thing in this actual comp plan amendment process, for professionals.
Mr. Bowen?
I'd just like to say, on behalf of the planning commission, I can't remember the last time I missed a meeting or a hearing, and I didn't see one person who came there to present their case who wasn't listened to and considered, they just didn't necessarily get what they wanted. I, I don't think anyone was turned away from presenting their concerns about their individual. Well, you said that they weren't heard, but they were.
Jake, could I ask you to go back to that last area that we've been talking about, please?
Sure.
Kind of zoom in on that island again. So is it fair to say that, that northwest quadrant there of that now, that Ag Forest 10, those, majority of those parcels are under 10 acres?
Yes.
Is that fair to say?
I, I can actually show you all the acreage sizes if you want.
Okay, so my question is, why wouldn't we do the map where it would conform now and create a lot less work for the property owners and for the board of commissioners at a future date, going parcel by parcel, changing the zone map and changing the comp map because it doesn't match the description? I guess that's what I'm trying to wrap my head around, is why wouldn't we do it now? If you go over to the east there a little bit, obviously, we're not following quadrant lines or, as you can see, it goes all over the place. Why wouldn't we have done the same thing to that area? Are you following my questions, or it doesn't make sense to me that?
Are you asking, why would we not, if we have an acre, or if you have a property that's, say, eight acres, why would we not comp plan designate it into a spot that would allow a sub 10 acre property?
An R5, right? Which still cannot be divided into two fours, but it's, it's compliant and it fits, and you get rid of the island, and so if you will slide that slide to the right just a little bit, to me, it makes, to me, it makes sense that you would take those two larger parcels on the left hand side and make that the boundary line for that area there, unless I'm missing something.
This just goes to the debate of leaving them non-conforming or not. So this, that's what led towards, so that, that same rationale you just explained led towards all the changes that were initially proposed to the lakefront properties that were, you know, half acre, acre or less, to change them to recreation community. And we saw a large number of public comments that were in disagreement with that idea, just leave them non-conforming, essentially is what the, the voice was. So rather than go through that effort throughout the county, they took that as a learning opportunity and not make any other drastic changes to make them conform.
I think there's a consistency of approach that you have to consider. So if you were going to do that here, I think you would have to do that everywhere. You'd have to look at every lot in the county and say, I'm going to land use designate, I'm going to put this lot in a land use designation that's appropriate for its current size. And, and that's going to create a patchwork, because, because frankly, there's, there's five and sub five acres, five acre lots all over, because as you probably know, there was a time when the whole county was owned five acres, right? So they're all over the place. And, and that goes against the idea of having broad land use designation areas, because that's the way we want the county to look moving forward to the best we can. So we made a choice to, to not do that and have lots that are non-conforming. I'd also like to go back and address Commissioner Williams' question from a few moments ago. If you were following our discussion all the way through the development of the land use plan, you may recall that there was a time when we were proposing to put all of them all into one land use designation, five, 10, and 20s. And it was based on an argument that we made, that, that the uses are the same. If you look at the use tables, it's between 5, 10, and 20, R5, R10, Ag 10, Ag 20, they're all the same. And, and Lupa directs us to look at the intrinsic characteristics of the land and the suitability for the particular uses and assign land use designations accordingly. So we, our logic was, well, if the uses are all the same, the intrinsic characteristics must be the same, put it in one land use designation. So a large, we got a huge amount of pushback from the public on that. And, and I think one of the foundations of the public's arguments was that they wanted it to be, they wanted the 10s and 20s to be in a separate land use designation from the 5s, because they wanted to have some additional, I'll say, protection against 10s and 20s becoming 5s. And so we listened to that input and backed away from that proposal and put the 5s in a separate land use designation from the 10s and 20s. So, so we did hear a lot of public input to actually make that process, I'll say, more challenging rather than less.
And in part, it was to address some concerns of people wanting to, in a way, protect larger lot size for agriculture as well, was an issue during the history of the conversation of how do you maintain larger lots versus chopping them down? And then the issue of the person who's a 10, 20, who then drops it to 5s and then you keep dropping it, but they're surrounded by larger lot sizes, doesn't allow for one of, in some of the comp plans or the sub area plans, it's larger lots to encourage agriculture, and we're breaking the land up. And I, I remember that was a concern people brought forward to say they wanted some additional difficulty in chopping up some larger lot sizes, essentially. Yes, sir. Yes, sir. Do you want to, you're a soft talker, you want to come and use the microphone? And you're stealing Cheryl's minutes too, right?
Yes, I am.
There you go.
Well, these are basically her minutes. Bernard Messer, for the record, Bonner County resident. My wife Cheryl was unable to attend this meeting today. I have chart excerpts from the five sub area comprehensive plans, especially highlighting what they desired for agricultural forest lands and rural residential lands. As what you have compiled for our land use designations is supposed to represent the people's vision for the future of our communities and county, I request that you hold the information up against the land use designations and matrixes adopted December 13th, 2005, and the current land use designations you have complied. Which designations and matrices are most, matrices are most distinguishable and in alignment with the will of the Bonner County residents. Will the proposed land use designations be clear and easy for Bonner County residents? Planning and zoning, hearing examiners, and the B O C C to understand, separate, and make solid, logical, uniform, and just, and just decisions formed? Language needs to be as airtight as possible. I personally prefer to the 2005 designation and matrix. I personally prefer to the two thousand and five designation and matrix and see no reason to change them. However, Bonner County Code twelve dash three-two-two still needs to be conformed to those with regard to the Ag Forest tens and twenties. How do you differentiate between Ag Forest tens and twenties from your Ag Forest designation? You might consider adding the soils and slopes criteria from the two thousand and five land use designations. No rural service centers or rural recreation communities should be allowed in Ag Forest land designations. Also, please add back a designation for rural residential tens to your rural residential designation and distinguish between the rural fives and tens. The Priest River Old Town Sub Area suggested rural residential tens should be located to create a buffer between Ag Forest lands and higher density residential areas. Current rural residential tens in Ag Forest areas or districts should not be allowed to divide. Further, please add that adequate water must be available for the rural residential designation. Please add language making it very difficult to make use, to make land use plan amendments or change, changes to the land use map. In past applications, the requesting party would have to explain why the change is a necessity. Requesting party should have to justify a change based either on a demonstrable error or a benefit to the public health, safety, welfare, and welfare, not just for an individual's personal gain. Thank you for your time, effort, and listening.
Did she give you a copy?
Yes.
Thank you.
I noted that the city of Dover and the city of Kootenay made, offered comments regarding the lands adjacent to the area of impact. It looked like they were both requesting to move away from suburban and preferred rural residential in those adjacent areas. Just curious what the planning commission's response was to those requests.
Well, there's differences between the different cities as to how they would like to see the county, like surrounding their areas, whether it's, whatever they call it now. Some of the cities wanted, you know, to have it consistent with their plan. Others wanted to make it the least used restricted land use designation and so that there would be an incentive for those areas to join the city, because it made it a higher density for instance. So we just basically didn't, we didn't really take all of that into consideration. So Dave, maybe you can explain it better. But we decided we would go with what we thought was appropriate relative to the different cities' regulations. That's kind of where we came.
I think you'll have a comment from the city of Priest River as well, with that same request of lower density around the city, especially within the area of impact. It's not included in, it's included in the public, because I think we received it a few weeks before our public hearing, so it's included with the majority of those other public comments.
Gotcha. As compared to the staff report?
We did hold a meeting with all of the cities, mainly to discuss the land use designations in and around, I think this was somewhere last year, July, August, something like that, maybe September. And we started the conversation with them then. It was mostly this, to talk about land use, but it got into the area of impact and then the state changes on the area of impact.
And then I was also curious, in the Sagel area, we get back into Beverly Drive, Crystal Loop, Walker Way, Mountain Ash Drive areas, we have, I think, mixed use designations in those areas, which currently have a lot of residential. And so I look at areas like Crystal Loop and Meadowlark and Robin, Beverly, those are setback a fair distance from ninety-five and have fairly high residential density in that area. Just curious, the rationale on the mixed use idea, do you anticipate commercial pushing that far back off of the highway?
Well, so one comment is, I think the map follows the recommended map from the sub-area plan, with maybe very, very few exceptions. So this was the proposal put forward by the sub-area plan. And I think it's been many years since we did that, but I think it was either a quarter or a half mile either side of ninety-five.
Quarter.
And we anticipated a potential change with frontage roads, so we set a quarter mile, including the frontage roads, if they ever drew a line.
Gotcha.
Off either side of ninety-five would be, they called it Sagel Transition, because that was the naming.
Right, Transition.
It's the same, but it's the same as what we decided to call these routes.
I can understand the frontage roads impacting that thinking, which wasn't something I was considering when I was doing the comparison ahead of time. So yeah, I can understand how that would change some of that character of access.
I think the way they drew the map pretty much matches that quarter mile criteria, as much as it could, isn't it?
Yeah, the shape, the geometry is a little.
Northwest, southeast today.
Odd. Okay, yeah, the frontage roads, especially given the current proposal from ITDs, worth considering.
And also that mixed use designation, it's for industrial, commercial, but also suburban, if I'm not mistaken.
Yeah, we discussed that last time.
So it's at the zoning level that you control, you know, where residential is versus commercial and industrial. The idea is that it all gets commingled.
I have a different opinion on how to approach that, but I understand where you guys are coming from, and the chairman provided a letter to further explain it. I differ in my perspective on it, but I understand what you're saying. I like to think about the sequence, and the comp plan is step one in the sequence, and the zoning should be born out of the comp plan. I don't want the current zoning to force the comp plan to follow suit. We might want to change the zoning to better address the comp plan. So for me, sequentially, I want, I want the comp plan to be what becomes the foundational document to make those, help inform those decisions about the zoning, instead of having the zoning force us into that corner. And maybe, maybe there can even be two categories of mixed use, one that specifically talks about commercial and suburban, and then one that just talks about industrial and commercial, because those can work together, commercial and, you know, suburban can work together. But then I think we would have a comp plan that's properly informing our zoning.
So we kicked around some ideas about industrial, including maybe citing them in a separate designation, but one of the issues that I have is, the current definition of industrial is a bit broad. So it includes anything where, and I don't remember the exact language, but anything where something is fabricated. And that can, that covers a wide range of things that I would normally probably intuitively think of them as commercial, not industrial. So I know, I think I've argued that if we're going to make, we're going to try to address that better, the first thing I would like to do is maybe redefine what's industrial or separated into two categories, maybe heavy industry, light industry, whatever you want to call it.
Sure.
And I understand the concern about, you know, the real heavy industry kind of stuff being located next to residential areas, that is not appropriate.
And I agree that, you know.
So there's a little bit of work that has to be done in the code, I think, to really clean that, that particular issue up. That's my personal opinion. And in the end, we decided this was the best way to approach it for now, until we get to the code.
It does seem like so many of these issues, we respond to the code. They say the code, it sets it up, so you go there, oh, it says mixed use, what does that mean? You go to the code and figure it out. Oh, it's, I was thinking about it the other day. People come into the planning office, they want to do this with their property, so that's probably the first time that they're going to look at a comp plan. They don't go there first.
Right, the average person's not aware.
No.
Can I pause? We need to take a five-minute recess. Sorry, it is two thirty-one, and we will take a recess and come back at two thirty-five.
That is an issue I got to fix, guys.
Technology? Technology issues never created.
So you bring your computer, everybody's messaging, the link was broken.